Good afternoon and welcome to the first reorganization of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners. The former Freeholder Board was recently redesigned as the Board of County Commissioners as a result of Public Law 2000, Chapter 67 that was recently signed into law by Governor Murphy. My name is Brad Meyer and I will now call this meeting to order in my capacity as clerk to the Board of County Commissioners. This meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice was given by posting a copy of the notice on bulletin boards on the first and second floor of the Main Street County Complex, 71 Main Street, Flemington, New Jersey, a public place reserved for such announcements. A copy was mailed on or before December 29, 2020, to the Hunterdon County Democrat, The Express Times, Courier-News, Star-Ledger, and Tap Into Online, newspapers designated to receive such notices and by filing a copy with a Hunterdon County Clerk. At this time, I would ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our military men and women at home and abroad. And we're going to use these flags. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call Reverend David Erickson of Old Rocks Church to lead us in invocation. Reverend?
Shall we pray? May the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable, oh God, in your sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. Our thanks to you, Lord, for this another great occasion in Hunterdon County where it's a wonderful privilege for us to be residing of the state of New Jersey and the United States, and we thank you for the peace and tranquility, business going along smoothly here in 2020, and we expect to do that in the next year. At the same time, we need to be having a God consciousness in our nation as never before. We pray that you would help us to know that in a special way. We think of the immeasurable lives of our constituents, our directed and elected leaders for the land of the free because of the home of the brave who fought physically, mentally, strategically, and emotionally with abandon, sacrifice, again and again. Many are well aware of the lines being drawn between freedom and bondage even now in this great nation of ours. And we pray, Lord, that you would give wisdom and protection and a special sense of direction this very week in Georgia today and the days right now, and certainly in Washington also this very week. We need a sense of your presence. There's so much confusion and turmoil with great minds and great leadership. At the same time, we're confused. We're really tremendous trouble right now, and we need a higher calling, a higher appeal. And we just finished with the time of year when we, the angel said to Joseph, "He shall save his people from their sins," which makes us realize, oh God, regardless of our background exactly in different churches, words like confession, repentance, and faith and reliance upon God are exceptionally important right now. We thank you for the freedom we already have to put our faith in action and again in 2021 with your direction and your ability to live out our lives and our privileges unto you and your will, having the ability to serve others appropriately and according to your word. You've told us in all our ways, acknowledge you, and you would direct our paths. You want us to serve even the least of these. You've told us in your word, inasmuch as we've done it to one of the least of these, we've done it unto you. And we need to have that relationship with you, not only of salvation but of guidance, of living that life that only you can be in order that we can serve others appropriately and really bring a difference into this country. We need, as a resurrection of the foundational principles that our foreparents and those who've gone before us and founded this nation have realized again and again, and a lot of it seems to be eroding, but we know we can come back. 2021 could be a time when we find a resurgence of faith and practice. And we pray for these tonight, who are taking up the gauntlets for a new year. We pray you'd bless every one of them with your tailored grace and their spouses and families with a new, fresh anointing so we can step out as on a fresh, new threshold for the best being ahead this year. We ask all of this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Erickson. On November 3, 2020, County Commissioner-elect Sean C. Van Dorn was duly elected by the residents of Hunterdon County to a second term in office and also as the first duly-elected county commissioner in Hunterdon County. I would now ask that Commissioner-elect Sean Van Dorn come to the podium. Mr. Van Dorn will be sworn into office by County Clerk Mary Melfi.
The only thing missing is his mother.
Yes.
I, Sean C. Van Dorn...
I, Sean C. Van Dorn... Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state...
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly perform...
And justly perform...
All the duties of the office...
All the duties of the office...
Of member...
Of member...
Board of County Commissioners...
Board of County Commissioners...
County of Hunterdon...
County of Hunterdon...
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God...
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you. Reverend?
Shall we pray? May the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable, oh God, in your sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. Our thanks to you, Lord, for this another great occasion in Hunterdon County, where it's a wonderful privilege for us to be residing of the state of New Jersey and the United States, and we thank you for the peace and tranquility, business going along smoothly here in 2020, and we expect to do that in the next year. At the same time, we need to be having a God consciousness in our nation as never before. We pray that you would help us to know that in a special way. We think of the immeasurable lives of our constituents, our directed and elected leaders for the land of the free because of the home of the brave who fought physically, mentally, strategically, and emotionally with abandoned sacrifice again and again. Many are well aware of the lines being drawn between freedom and bondage even now in this great nation of ours. And we pray, Lord, that you would give wisdom and protection and a special sense of direction this very week in Georgia today and the days right now, and certainly in Washington also this very week. We need a sense of your presence. There's so much confusion and turmoil with great minds and great leadership. At the same time, we're confused. We're really tremendous trouble right now, and we need a higher calling, a higher appeal. And we just finished with the time of year when we, the angel said to Joseph, "He shall save his people from their sins," which makes us realize, oh God, regardless of our background exactly in different churches, words like confession, repentance, and faith and reliance upon God are exceptionally important right now. We thank you for the freedom we already have to put our faith in action and again in 2021 with your direction and your ability to live out our lives and our privileges unto you and your will, having the ability to serve others appropriately and according to your word. You've told us in all our ways, acknowledge you, and you would direct our paths. You want us to serve even the least of these. You've told us in your word, inasmuch as we've done it to one of the least of these, we've done it unto you. And we need to have that relationship with you, not only of salvation, but of guidance, of living that life that only you can be, in order that we can serve others appropriately and really bring a difference into this country. We need, as a resurrection of the foundational principles, that our foreparents and those who've gone before us and founded this nation have realized again and again, and a lot of it seems to be eroding, but we know we can come back. 2021 can be a time when we find a resurgence of faith and practice. And we pray for these tonight, who are taking up the gauntlets for a new year. We pray you'd bless every one of them with your tailored grace and their spouses and families with a new, fresh anointing, so we can step out as on a fresh, new threshold for the best being ahead this year. We ask all of this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
On November 3, 2020, County Commissioner-elect Sean C. Van Dorn was duly elected by the residents of Hunterdon County to a second term in office and also as the first duly-elected County Commissioner in Hunterdon County. I would now ask that Commissioner-elect Sean Van Dorn come to the podium. Mr. Van Dorn will be sworn into office by County Clerk Mary Melfi.
The only thing missing is his mother.
Yes.
I, Sean C. Van Dorn.
I, Sean C. Van Dorn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
County of Hunterdon.
County of Hunterdon.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Sean.
Need your John Hancock to make a decision.
This is different. Oh, is this a clean or dirty one?
It's dirty, but it's okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the 2021 pandemic version of the first reorganization meeting of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners, formerly known as the Board of Chosen Freeholders. I wish a Happy New Year to everyone. Three years ago, I stood here to take the same oath that I just took, albeit under a bit different circumstances with a smaller audience, but I know there are many of you watching out there live on Facebook and listening on the telephone a first. Who would have thought our lives would have been so upended to almost not let the public attend these history-making events? I'm glad that we created this hybrid reorganization ceremony to allow the public to attend for those who felt comfortable doing so, thanks to all of the individuals who made today's ceremony happen in this historic courtroom. Let me recognize a very special individual who unfortunately is not here with us today. That's my mother, Barbara Van Dorn. Fortunately, she is alive and well. She turned 90 back on November 15, and yes, she does allow me to tell her age and I not get scolded for doing so. She, like any mother would be, has been steadfast in her support, for which I am truly grateful, even more so to have staunch Democratic support. She was not old enough to have remembered the 1918 pandemic, but she learned about it from her parents. She opted not to attend today out of caution, as we have all taken precautions in our own lives since last spring. Thank you to my best friend and our county clerk, Mary Melfi, for again swearing me in, in person. Mary and I have known each other since our early days in the 2000s during our respective municipal government service, she driving the roller after they paved Capner Street, and I standing on the sidewalk watching. She is not only a true leader, having rowed the boat through a torrent of executive orders, legislative changes, election division rules, and on and on to ensure we had secure elections, but a tried and true friend who listens, tells you when you're wrong, and even when you are right. I am honored to now become Hunterdon's last and first, the last to run for reelection under the title of Freeholder, and the first to take the oath of office as a County Commissioner. I do have three-quarters of a box of Freeholder business cards left, which I will continue to use until they are gone, just to show my and the county's frugality and penny-pinching. I thank the voters of Hunterdon County for their confidence in me and giving me the opportunity to serve a second term. To those who did not support me, you have my commitment to represent you, as I would all the citizens of Hunterdon County, in the best way I can to ensure your county government is here for you, serving you, working for you, and supporting you. I will remember the year 2020, sadly for the countless lives lost due to COVID-19 here in Hunterdon County and across the United States. My heartfelt condolences to all those who lost a family member or friend, and to those who got sick but recovered or are still recovering, best wishes for better health. I will remember the year 2020, also serving as Director during a pandemic, which has not been easy. What started out as an unknown entity quickly ballooned. Leading county government initially with setting meeting agendas and leading bimonthly meetings in January and February led to daily calls and briefings seven days a week for weeks in late March, much of April, into May during the initial stages of the pandemic, including speaking with our federal, state, and local officials on a constant pace, receiving mountains of information and data, and trying to disseminate it so as to be able to speak cogently and with certainty. People looked to their leaders for answers. Some did better than others. I'd like to put myself in that better category. And holding a full-time job, which mine necessitated returning to our physical work location after three months of completely working from home, something I was not used to full-time and personally don't like, but I know I'm probably in the minority when it comes to that. 2020 was a challenging and difficult year. Despite the circumstances, what we were able to accomplish here in the county is a testament to the experience of all of my colleagues on the board and our willingness to work together. I thank Sue, Matt, John, and Zach for their support last year. I could not have served as Director without them and a dedicated, excuse me, dedicated county staff ensuring county government functioned with multiple adoptions of scheduling, meeting the public, holding meetings via phone, and so on. While we may be under a new name, we are still under the same steady management, and we will continue to serve in the best interest of the residents of our county. I also want to thank County Clerk Mary Melfi, surrogate Susan Hoffman, Sheriff Fred Brown, and Acting Prosecutor Mike Williams. Your public service, hard work, and dedication is without question in the forefront of the public good. So as we enter feet-first into 2021, just like we entered 2020, we're in this together, and we will get through it together. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I will now conduct a full roll call of the full membership of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Lanza?
Here.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Here.
Mr. Van Dorn?
Here.
We are now at the portion of our agenda for the nomination of the Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I would ask for a motion to open the nomination process for the position of Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Is there a nomination for the position of Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners?
Mr. Meyer, it would be my pleasure to nominate a very able, intelligent colleague of mine and a very good friend of mine, Mr. John Lanza, to the position of Deputy Director for the year of 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Holt. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rich. Hearing no other nominations for the position of Deputy Director, I will now close the nomination process for the position of Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. I will now proceed with a roll call vote to name Johnny Lanza as Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Holt?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Lanza?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
Mr. Van Dorn?
Yes.
Congratulations. I would now ask for nomination process to begin for the Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there a motion to open up the nomination process for the position of Director of the Board of County Commissioners?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Is there a nomination for the position of Director of the Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, I would like to nominate Sue Salloway.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Dorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanza. Hearing no other nominations for the position of Director of the Board, I will now close the nomination process for the position of Director of the Board of County Commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. I'll now proceed forward with a roll call vote to name Susan J. Salloway as Director of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Van Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Lanza?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
And Mr. Van Dorn. I'm sorry, Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I would now ask that Commissioner Lanza please come to the podium, who will be sworn in as Deputy Director of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners by the
All right. Thank you. Hello. Mr. Lanza?
Judge Ballard.
I will now administer the oath. Please repeat after me. I, John E. Lanza.
I, John E. Lanza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of Deputy Director, Board of County Commissioners, County of Hunterdon.
Deputy Director, County Commissioners. It's like, what is this? Yeah, Deputy Director, Board of County Commissioners, County of Hunterdon. Got to get used to this.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Deputy Director. At this time, I would now ask that Commissioner Susan Salloway please come to the podium, where she will be sworn in as Director of the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners by Senator Michael J. Dougherty.
Please raise your right hand. I, Susan J. Salloway.
I, Susan J. Salloway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Director.
Of the Office of the Director.
Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
County of Hunterdon.
County of Hunterdon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Welcome to the 2021 Hunterdon County Reorganization Meeting, our first ever to be livestreamed. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, the Clerk of the Board, for doing an excellent job in chairing the meeting to this point, and congratulations to you on your new additional role of Acting Chief of Staff. I offer my most sincere thanks to my colleagues for the honor that they have granted in selecting me to serve as Director of the Board, our first year as the Board of County Commissioners. It's a great privilege and one I could not have achieved without the love and support of my family. Thank you most especially to my husband, Rob, with whom I could never be here without him. Thank you, Senator Dougherty, for swearing me in, and thank you, Reverend Erickson, for leading us in today's prayers. Congratulations to Commissioner Van Dorn on your reelection to the Board and for the tremendous job you did providing leadership during the many challenging challenges that we faced during 2020. And I do think you deserve another round of applause for that. I congratulate Commissioner John Lanza for your election to serve as Deputy Director. I will be relying on you very much for your experience and your leadership during my term as Director. And Commissioners Matt Holt and Zach Rich, it does feel really odd to say the word Commissioners, so bear with me if I slip and say Freeholder. I value the knowledge and insights for both of you bring for the long service both here in county and in local government. We have all worked well together during my first two years on the Board, and I look forward to the five of us continuing to work as a team in the best interest in the people of Hunterdon County. I wish to acknowledge our constitutional officers who have joined us here today. They are very much part of the team effort that makes Hunterdon County Government so well-run. We have County Surrogate Susan Hoffman, Sheriff Fred Brown, County Clerk Mary Melfi, and Acting Prosecutor Mike Williams. Thank you for all you do for the people of Hunterdon County. I also wish to acknowledge Senator Marcia Caro, Nancy Palladino, and Suzanne Legay, the only three other women to ever serve as Directors of the Board in the 307-year history of our county, whose pioneering leadership paved the way for my selection as Director, not because of gender, but because of merit. Thank you for leading the way. And so, in 2021, we confront COVID-19 year two. Hunterdon County, with working with the resources and authority we have, took the steps necessary in 2020 to protect the health of our residents. The county has made COVID-19 testing as accessible as possible with self-testing now available through our website, hunterdoncares.org. The county health department and Office of Emergency Management have begun a vaccination program for those who wish to be vaccinated under the priority group rules established by state and federal government. The county's OEM has distributed thousands of units of PPEs to all entities that have needed them: rescue squads, fire companies, medical providers, the hospital, long-term care facilities, municipalities, food pantries, faith-based organizations, and our county units. And going a step further, I can announce today that the Board has approved providing state-of-the-art respiratory protection systems that give maximum protection to users to each of the 13 rescue squads in our county. I'm advised this life-protecting equipment carries a cost that normally exceeds the fiscal capabilities of local volunteer units, agencies which have been severely affected by the economic impacts of the pandemic. Our first responders have put themselves on the front line for all of us throughout this pandemic. Where the county can provide those brave individuals with the equipment and protections they need to do their jobs protecting our residents, we're going to do so. As a former mayor and township committee person in Franklin Township, I have always believed the county should be a great resource. I have always believed the county should be a great resource to our communities and our taxpayers. Toward that end, I propose in 2021, we put Hunterdon County first. Let's put Hunterdon County first for the health of our residents, for our municipalities that are responsible for the quality of life in our communities, for our local economy and small businesses, for our first responders, for our educators and students, and for our taxpayers. Putting Hunterdon County first for the health of our residents means gaining the amount of COVID-19 vaccinations needed for our county residents. Our point-of-distribution program is set up. The County Health Department is already providing vaccinations to those in the Category 1A, including EMTs and school nurses. Just today, another 150 individuals were vaccinated at the county's drive-through clinic with 150 more scheduled for Thursday. Hunterdon County is doing our job, and we are prepared when the state authorizes more individuals to be vaccinated. Putting Hunterdon County first also means continuing to grow our shared services with our towns. Two years ago, we initiated a shared service program of electric power aggregation that saved nine of our communities substantial costs in paying their power bills. That program needs to be renewed in 2021, and my goal is to add more towns to the list of those saving tax dollars on their electric costs. Creating more shared services opportunities like that will be a priority in 2021. The county's Economic Development Municipal Grant Program has been a huge success. I look forward to reports this year from the Economic Development Office on the value these grants have provided to the many towns that have been awarded grants and further expansion of the program. Additionally, my colleague and former Director Sean Van Doran began a program of periodic mayor calls in order to improve communication during the pandemic between the county and municipalities. I will continue that program. I know it's appreciated by the mayors and has been proven to be effective. Putting Hunterdon County first means standing up for our businesses. We fought for our business community throughout the governor's shutdowns last year, calling for curbside delivery, regional reopenings, not interfering with business operating hours, and permitting the use of outdoor tents during the winter. And we have had success when Governor Murphy finally started to listen. Attracting businesses and jobs to the county remains a priority for this Board, and we will do all we can to continue to support the Economic Development Program in developing creative methods for making sure it is known that Hunterdon County is open for business. We have also been advised that the Economic Development Office, Hunterdon Hot 579 Trail, and the Main Streets websites have had a real positive effect on our tourism businesses. We've gained firsthand knowledge of the needs and concerns of our local businesses and the impact of economic development initiatives during site tours with businesses and local government officials around the county. I intend to continue that listening and learning tour with our business community. I already noted the assistance provided to first responders from the county's Office of Emergency Management in response to the pandemic. To add to that, our first responder community will be among the priority groups to be offered COVID-19 vaccinations by the county once the state approves moving to Category 1B. Also, among the next priority group will be our teachers. We all want to see children back to school buildings, learning the best and safest way possible. Vaccinating educators is an important step in achieving that goal. Putting Hunterdon County first means continuing our state-leading efforts to preserve farmland and open space in the county. Hunterdon County has preserved the most farms in any county in the state and is the second-most-preserved acreage, over 34,000 acres of preserved farmland. I know our volunteers at the County Ag Development Board and the Parks and Open Space Committee are continuing their efforts to determine what additional land can be preserved, and we will support those efforts. And putting Hunterdon County first means putting the taxpayers first. When I first joined this Board in 2019, I said I believe tax dollars were precious and must be used effectively, efficiently, and sparingly. I have not and will not waver from that philosophy. The pandemic will create fiscal challenges. The county is responsible for the health at a local level, and there are significant costs involved for 2021. And we will anticipate that revenues that normally flow to the county will be reduced as a result of the governor's shutdown in 2020. None of that, in my opinion, is an excuse not to live within our means, which is to say, the taxpayers' means. Oversight, fiscal controls, and ensuring efficiency in operations have been hallmarks of Hunterdon County Government throughout the years. It will continue in 2021. I again thank my colleagues for the great honor of being chosen as Director. I look forward to a challenging, yet fulfilling, year. I thank everyone who's in attendance today for joining us, even though we kept the attendance to a minimum to meet the health protocols. And I thank our viewers, who are observing these proceedings through the livestreaming for the first time. Thank you and Happy New Year. All right, we will continue with county commissioner comments. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, okay.
I just want to thank everybody for last year. Great year last year. I want to thank our staff and employees. Happy New Year to everybody. Sean, thank you again for all your leadership last year. Sue, congratulations. John, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. I will move to reorganization, the resolutions.
Director?
Yes?
We get a couple remarks from John Lanza.
I'm sorry?
John Lanza.
Yeah, did you want to have? Yeah, that's right. Your comments, okay. You're going to say them from there?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Because this is your show. Yeah, congratulations, Director. Thank you for the opportunity, and it's going to be a privilege to be able to serve in leadership with you this year. You certainly earned the title, and I look forward to helping make this a success for you. I know it will be.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to Commissioner Van Doran. I think I've congratulated you at least at four meetings. The first one, the day after the election day, when there were some election returns in, and then the second time, when most of them were in at the end of November, and then December, when everything was done. But congratulations, job well done.
Thank you.
Look forward to another term with you back on the team here. I'd like to thank my colleagues for nominating me as Deputy Director this year. I look forward to working with all of you, as I always have and as we always have as a unit, confronting the challenges that are in front of us and overcoming them and getting results for the people of Hunterdon County. And as the Director said, putting Hunterdon first, as we always have. I share the Director's acknowledgement that none of us would be able to sit here and do our duties for the people of Hunterdon County without our families. And mine, my wife Kira, my children Mark and Bridget, my mom, my dad normally would be here, but they are not out of respect for the restrictions and to be out of an abundance of caution. So I thank them for being here in spirit and virtually. And I also want to thank Judge Ballard for coming down. My father would normally administer the oath, so I want to thank Judge Ballard for coming down and performing that function. My wife and kids would normally hold the Bible for me, so I want to thank the podium for taking care of that function. And just want to thank everybody who is here for being here. I know normally we have a lot more people. And so that's one of the reasons that we are now embarking on the first all-virtual livestreaming meeting of the County Board of Commissioners, Freeholders, whatever you want to call us. I caution you that we're not going to be doing this very often yet, and there's a reason for that. This particular meeting is a special meeting for everybody. It's a special meeting for the families of those who are being sworn in. It's a special meeting for the families of those who sit on this Board. We will typically have family members, supporters, well-wishers, other appointed and elected officials. We would have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, veterans. This place would be packed. And so, out of respect and out of caution, we've streamed this so that everyone who would want to be here could at least participate in some way. And so we're doing that today for this special meeting. However, doing this does take up a lot of man-hours from our staff, and we appreciate the work that they've done. But, you know, there's some logistical problems with streaming this, and I'm sure that later during the comments, I'm sure we'll get something from the public about someone complaining about the sound. So logistically speaking, this is hard for us to do right now. But so for the time being, I will announce that in light of the fact that we are still in pandemic status, we will be meeting here in this building at 5:30 on the first and third Tuesday of every month. So it will be here. And I hope that at some point, when the pandemic abates, when more vaccines are available to people, that we'll be able to go back to our old room, which was formerly known as the Freeholders' Meeting Room. Now, I guess it'll be the Commissioners' Meeting Room. More on that a little bit later. And just one thing that I missed. Also wanted to thank, as the Director did, the constitutional officers for the job that they do here. I belong, I'm a member of the New Jersey Association of Counties on behalf of Hunterdon, and I get to talk to other people from other counties, and I can tell you that our constitutional officers, individually and as a group, are second to none. We have been dealt four aces to deal with in those departments. And I'm talking about the Clerk, Mary Melfi. I'm talking about the surrogate, Susan Hoffman. I'm talking about Sheriff Fred Brown. And I'm talking about our Acting Prosecutor, Mike Williams. We really could not possibly have better people to work with. And it's yet another reason that this Board is able to continue to achieve results for the people who elect us, even in the face of adversity thrown at us by nature, thrown at us by the state, from wherever it may come. These are the people that help keep your government work, so I'm working. And so I want to thank them for all that they've done, just the Director has done earlier. So perhaps at some point in 2021, we will be returning to in-person meetings at what will be the County Commissioners' Meeting Room, which brings me to my second point. As the Clerk of the Board, Brad Meyer, mentioned earlier, that Public Law 2020 Chapter 67, passed by the state legislature and signed into law by the governor last year, changes the name of this governing body from the Board of Chosen Freeholders to the Board of County Commissioners. There are a few firsts and lasts to be acknowledged. If there are any future Hunterdon County historians sitting out here or viewing from afar. Sue Salloway will be the first Director, not just the first woman, but the first Director, period, in county commissioner history here in Hunterdon County. Sean Van Doran will be the last person elected as a Freeholder and the first person sworn in as a Commissioner in the Board of Commissioners' history. And of course, that and four bucks still won't get you Matt Holt's favorite latte from Starbucks. Unfortunately, there's just a bit of trivia that might get you the county historian position in about 50 years, who knows? But I do wish to reiterate that, from my previous statements, that no matter what you call us, and we've been called a lot of things, not a lot of things I can repeat, but no matter what you call us, what this body is going to do with these constitutional officers, what we will continue to do is to deliver for the people of this county, even in the face of adversity. And that we will continue, as the Director said, to put Hunterdon first. That is our focus. I don't care what you call us. So thank you, Director. Look forward to a great year, and I know that you will have much success.
Just real quick, if you could. Could you pull your mics closer? We're getting feedback from some of the audience they can't hear on Facebook. So you called it.
Moving on, we will do the reorganization resolutions. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the Hunterdon County Board of County Commissioners and will be enacted in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items. The discussion is desired. They will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. The matters listed on the Consent Agenda are routine matters addressed at the reorganization meeting, such as naming alternate councils, newspapers of record, and the continuation of various union contracts, among other items. An agenda listed as the accompanying resolutions are available on the county website. One of the first resolutions establishes the various liaison assignments for the Board members for the forthcoming year. The members of this Board take the responsibilities seriously, and this sort of subcommittee system is one of the keys to our success in overseeing the wide and extensive experiences in the county. I believe it is important to announce some of those major assignments in 2021. Mr. Rich will continue as liaison for the Department of Public Works and Engineering to the Library Commission and will serve as the county member of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority and will join me as a Veterans Liaison, among other assignments. Mr. Holt will continue his long service as a member of the Budget Committee, where his extensive experience has proven valuable time and time again. And additionally, Mr. Holt will serve as liaison to the Department of Planning and Land Use and continue as Economic Development Liaison, where he has been instrumental in initiating successes. Mr. Van Doran will serve as liaison to the Department of Health, and all that entails and issues of COVID-19 testing and vaccinations remain at the forefront. He will also be liaison to the Department of Human Services as a representative of the RVCC Board of School Estimate and on the Budget Committee, among other assignments. Deputy Director Lanza will serve on the liaison to the Department of Public Safety and the Office of Emergency Management, to our constitutional officers and to the Board of Elections, which proved to be significant responsibility for him in 2020 and will no doubt be significant again this year. My assignment as Director includes liaison with the Administration, County Council, the Finance Department, our veterans, and economic development, in addition to being a member of the Board of School Estimate and both RVCC and Polytech. The system of dividing responsibilities among the Board members have worked well in the past, and I expect it will be well going forward. I greatly appreciate the time each member of this Board devotes to overseeing their liaison responsibilities on behalf of the people of our county. May I have a motion to move the Consent Agenda, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Lanza, and do I have a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Van Doran. And roll call, please, Brad?
Yes, Director. Mr. Lanza?
Yes.
Mr. Van Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have new business consent. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are contended routine by the Hunterdon County Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on this item, and if discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. This resolution is the reappointment of our County Council. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mr. Van Doran, Mr. Rich, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt. Can I have a roll call, please, Brad?
Yes, Director. Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Lanza?
Yes.
Mr. Van Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Salloway?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And while I'm here, I want to acknowledge some of our special guests here. We have Assemblyman Eric Peterson, thank you for coming, and Judge Ballard, who swore in as Commissioner Lanza. Thank you for attending today. And we are at the part of our day that we have to do public comments. Should I do the phone ones first, or?
I would do the courthouse, and then we'll go to the phone.
Okay. So do I have any public comments? Seeing none, we will go to the phone for public comments. At this time, I'll entertain comments from the people on the phone.
You may have to star six to unmute themselves.
To unmute your telephone, please dial star six. Do I have any comments from the public on the phone? Remember, you have to dial star six if you want to have a comment. Okay, seeing none, we can move. Do we have any additional county commissioner comments?
Director, just want to take a moment. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Van Doran.
Thank you.
And to Mr. Lanza, and to you, Commissioner Salloway. Congratulations on both your roles. We could not be in better hands. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, as part of the meeting, we will have the benediction from Reverend David Erickson. Do you want to just close out the meeting with the? Do you want to just close out the meeting with the-
It's a short benediction, if you want to stand. Oh God, we thank you for the procedures here today. We thank you for the efficiency and the way things have been done and will be done this week, this coming year. We also want to thank you that we do live in a country where even when people pray, they can address you with a direct address, the way they understand it, in the public domain. And I pray now that you would bless us as we leave here and go our homes. Help us to remember that the closer we are to you, our relationship with you and your Word, the clearer we'll see to do our duties, and the better we'll function in that respect. We thank you, Lord, for behind all of these masks here tonight. There are a lot of good-looking people. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
Can you take them off?
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. And that is the conclusion of our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Brad? Do we do roll call? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Vote to pass. Thank you, everyone.